Okay.
Good evening and welcome to a March 15th meeting of the Needham Select Board. I'm Mo Handel, Chair. This open meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations, and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting will not include public comment. Anything shared or stated at this meeting will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.NeedhamMA.gov, unless otherwise noted. As posted, the purpose of this meeting is to discuss the independent investigator's report and recommendations concerning the Needham Police Department. We will not be having any questions or discussions during the presentation portion of this meeting. First, we're going to hear from Tom Harrington, Town Attorney, to present the findings of the independent investigator. Following Mr. Harrington, we will hear from Chief John Schlittler. Before we go to any comments or questions about the report, I will then read a draft statement that I worked on with the town manager. It reflects my views that after I read it, I will ask the board to formally vote its support of the statement and to accept the report as submitted by Ms. Tidwell. And now, please, Mr. Harrington, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Tom Harrington, and I am an attorney with Meara's in Harrington. I have been assisting the town in the consideration of and response to the January 25th, 2020 shoplifting incident at CVS involving Mr. Marvin Henry. Sandy, can you share the PowerPoint?
Yes, just one moment, please.
Thank you, Sandy. As you know, the board commissioned an investigation into the January 25th incident. I am here to present the results and conclusions of that investigation. Next slide, please, Sandy. On September 9th, 2020, the town engaged attorney Natasha Tidwell and the law firm of Saul, Ewing, Arnstein, and Layer to conduct a thorough investigation into the incident involving Mr. Marvin Henry and members of the Needham Police Department. Attorney Tidwell was asked to determine what role, if any, racial discrimination or implicit bias played in Needham Police Department's actions in response to the January 25th, 2020 incident. She was asked to conduct a thorough investigation of all aspects of Needham Police Department's response to the 911 call placed by a CVS employee on January 25th, 2020. And she was asked to review the Needham Police Department's policies, in effect as of that date, and to determine if Needham Police Department's actions were consistent with those policies. Finally, Attorney Tidwell was asked to review all Needham Police Department policies related to the incident and to provide recommendations as to the effectiveness and sufficiency of each policy. She was asked to provide recommendations as well as to additional training or other steps Needham Police Department may consider for the purposes of improving its delivery of services to communities of color. Next slide, please, Sandy. Attorney Tidwell produced a 41-page report. In the preparation of her report, she or members of her team interviewed 12 witnesses, some more than once, reviewed the video and audio recordings associated with the January 25th incident, reviewed the correspondence related to the incident, and the Needham Police Department policies and procedures. The report contains detailed factual summaries and analysis of the interviews conducted and a thorough analysis of the internal affairs investigation conducted by the Needham Police Department. Mr. Chair, I'm not going to summarize for you the factual summaries. I'm going to go straight to the conclusions drawn by Attorney Tidwell. First, she concluded that the Needham Police Officers had reasonable suspicion to stop Mr. Henry. Attorney Tidwell also concluded that she could not support a finding that the Needham Police Officers engaged in racial profiling when they stopped Mr. Henry. Furthermore, Attorney Tidwell found that at some point, the investigative stop of Mr. Henry became an arrest. She could not determine the exact moment that that happened and whether probable cause existed at the time of the transition to an arrest. Attorney Tidwell concluded that if the search of Mr. Henry and his automobile occurred prior to a probable cause determination, it was against Needham Police Department's investigative detention policy and applicable law. Attorney Tidwell has concluded that there were deficiencies in the internal affairs investigation. She has offered a number of recommendations to improve future internal affairs investigations. She has also provided recommendations to supplement or amend certain Needham Police Department policies and procedures. Next slide, please, Sandy. Before I move to Attorney Tidwell's recommendations, I just wanted to remind everyone the timeframe for reaching today. So again, January 25th, 2020, a CVS employee calls 911 to report shoplifting. Marvin Henry is stopped, handcuffed, searched, and released by Needham Police Officers. Then, on July 20, 2020, Marvin Henry, through his attorneys, sends a letter to Police Chief John Schlittler stating that Needham Police Officers engaged in an unlawful search and seizure and racial profiling during the January 25th incident. Soon thereafter, in July and August of 2020, town hall staff and town attorney opened a dialogue with Mr. Henry's attorneys. Town hall staff and town attorney also worked to identify qualified outside candidates to investigate the Marvin Henry incident. On September 9th, 2020, the town hired attorney Natasha Tidwell, a nationally recognized expert in the field of police investigations. Also in September 2020, the Needham Police Department began conducting its own internal affairs investigation into the incident. In December 2020, the Needham Police Department finalized its internal affairs investigation report. And in January 2020, 2021, it issued an addendum to that report, which did not change the conclusions of that report. We then get to today. We received this draft on March 11th, and it is submitted to you for your review. Next slide, please, Sandy. Okay, Attorney Tidwell's recommendations. Attorney Tidwell has offered recommendations to amend Needham Police Department's use of force and threshold inquiry policies. So this is her recommendation to amend our general policies. First, regarding the use of force policy, she recommends that the Needham Police Department specifically identify de-escalation as a guiding principle in the use of force decision-making, and that officers be required to attempt to de-escalate a situation where they are reasonably and safely able to do so. Now, our current use of force policy does identify de-escalation as a principle, but it's Attorney Tidwell's recommendation that we enhance that identification. Regarding the threshold inquiry policy, she recommends that the policy be revised to require officers to include handcuffing as part of any investigative detention report, even if the handcuffing does not meet the requirements for reporting under the use of force policy identified above, and which was the case in this specific incident. Moving on to internal affairs investigations, Attorney Tidwell offers operational and procedural recommendations specific to our internal affairs investigations. Now, this set of recommendations is not in the form of amendments, but rather she is suggesting a stricter adherence to our current policies, and she identifies four policies. First, under the eyewitness identification policy, she cautions officers that the unreliability to as to the unreliability of eyewitness identifications. She cautions the need to avoid circumstances that are unnecessarily suggested of criminality, like asking a witness to identify a suspect who is handcuffed. And she cautions against the use of RMV photos to identify suspects. Under our follow-up investigations policy, Attorney Tidwell criticizes Needham Police Department for identifying as a suspect the owner of the van Mr. Henry was driving and using that person's RMV photo to confirm suspicion. Under the courtesy to the public policy, Attorney Tidwell suggests that Mr. Henry's concerns regarding the demeanor of a Needham Police Department officer were not sufficiently addressed in the internal affairs investigation. And last, under the request for officer identification, that's name and badge number policy, Attorney Tidwell suggests that if an officer walked away from Mr. Henry without providing his name and badge number, as is suggested by Mr. Henry, it would constitute a violation of this policy. So those were her requests to those specific policies. Now, finally, Attorney Tidwell comments that our current internal affairs investigation policy tasks investigators with submitting a written report at the conclusion of an investigation. That includes an evaluation of the complaint and a definitive conclusion of fact as to whether each allegation made by the complainant was supported by sufficient evidence. She notes, however, that we do not identify what sufficient evidence is, and she recommends that we include a specific preponderance of evidence standard, a preponderance of evidence standard of proof for sustaining a complaint, and that would be generally a 51% standard of proof. She suggests and believes that this will give officers and the community some assurance that complaints are being investigated fairly and uniformly. She also recommends that the implementation of a civil oversight function in internal affairs investigations would help promote transparency and enhance trust and community confidence. Next slide. Mr. Chair, this concludes my report on the investigative report before you. I'm happy to take any questions at this time, and I point out that at the conclusion of this meeting, the report and all other relevant materials to this investigation can be found on the link identified on the PowerPoint. Thank you very much.
So thank you, Mr. Harrington. We're going to defer questions until we've gone through the presentation or comments by Chief Schlittler and a statement that I'm going to read for adoption by this board. Chief Schlittler, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I have a prepared statement from the Needham Police Department. The Needham Police Department has received the independent investigation that was completed by attorney Natasha Tidwell into the incident involving members of the Needham Police Department and Mr. Marvin Henry in January of 2020. We continue to review and evaluate the report's recommendations and findings. We agree that racial profiling and bias was not a factor in this incident. We believe that the officers responded to a call for a crime in progress, acted in accordance with the law, based on information provided to them on scene. I support the actions of the officers that day. While we are still reviewing the findings and recommendations made in the report, it is important to note that Attorney Tidwell states that she cannot conclude whether probable cause existed to arrest Mr. Henry. Because of that, we disagree with her finding that officers engaged in a search that was in violation of NPD policies and applicable law. As we continually strive to better serve the Needham community, we also acknowledge that there are opportunities for the department to improve. We have already implemented some of the recommendations that were included in the report prior to its completion, and we will review and evaluate the other recommendations, Attorney Tidwell included, as well. We recognize that the Needham Police Department should have better communicated with Mr. Henry in the aftermath of the incident and ensuing investigation. We regret any distress this has caused him. We will review all Attorney Tidwell's recommendation and address potential changes that need to be made to ensure that all NPD policies and procedures are fair for the people we serve while protecting the safety of our officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Schlittler.
I'd now like to read a statement that I'm going to propose for the board to adopt as its own. "The Needham Select Board has received the independent investigation report of Natasha Tidwell and the firm of Saul, Ewing, Arnstein, and Layer into the incident involving members of the Needham Police Department and Mr. Marvin Henry in January of 2020. The town retained Attorney Tidwell and her firm to investigate the events of the incident, the follow-up, and the relevant Needham policies, practices, and procedures, including determination of whether and to what extent racial discrimination or implicit bias were factors in the case, and to offer recommendations based on those findings. Attorney Tidwell and the firm of Saul, Ewing, Arnstein, and Layer are nationally recognized experts in this work. Key findings of the report are, under the circumstances, the officers had reasonable suspicion to stop Mr. Henry, and the preponderance of the evidence does not support a finding that the officers racially profiled Mr. Henry. The report includes other findings and suggestions for improvement, which the board takes seriously, and we will need time to evaluate them. The board acknowledges the impact this incident had on Mr. Henry. Mr. Henry has expressed that this incident was traumatic and painful one, and for that, we are deeply sorry. Mr. Henry did nothing wrong. He was wrongly identified by a neighborhood business and accused of shoplifting. When he was released by the police, he was informed that he was a suspect in a crime. He deserved to be notified as soon as it was determined that he was no longer a suspect. In making this statement, the members of the select board acknowledge and restate our support for the men and women of the Needham Police Department. Their work is challenging and difficult. They put their lives on the line every day and confront situations most of us never will. We believe the officers on the scene used their best judgment under the circumstances. We acknowledge the police department's cooperation throughout this investigation. We will be working with the Needham Police Chief to consider opportunities for improvements to practices and policies as recommended by Attorney Tidwell as appropriate. The board acknowledges the need and obligation to continue to ensure that our policies and procedures are respectful to all while also respecting the needs of police officers to remain safe. The board thanks Attorney Tidwell and her team for their thorough effort and diligence during these past difficult months. Is there a motion for the board formally to vote its support of this statement and to accept the report submitted by Natasha Tidwell pursuant to the scope of services contract issued on September 9th, 2020? Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. All those in favor signify when I call your name. Mr. Matthews? You're on mute, Dan.
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That is unanimous. So this statement is adopted as the statement of the board with respect to this report and the situation. I'd now like to call for questions and comment. Does anybody from the board wish to ask a question or make a comment? Hearing none? Mr. Borelli and then Ms. Cooley?
Sure. I just want to make sure. Okay. Yeah, I just, you know, it's been a long, many months, and the crux of this issue was whether or not this was a racially motivated incident. And I know many of us on the board and the community felt, you know, we heard the, our board heard the 911 call, we saw the police report. The employee was actually someone of color who made the call, and the police were put into a situation where they had to respond. And I think it, there was a rush to judgment on people who have called me or things that I've seen that somehow this was a racist incident and it was racially motivated. And I think this report by an independent investigator says that it wasn't, and that's where we have to look at it in moving forward. It's just important to note that, and it's just unfortunate that, to me, there was such a rush to, you know, what I saw, comments to me about the police and some personal attacks, it was just an unfortunate position that they were put in. So I do want to say thank you to the chief in his department, and just moving forward, looking forward to, you know, what the recommendations are. We'll look at those and move from this. But looking at the report, to me, it's clear, and I'm glad we had the conclusion that I think a lot of us knew that our department's very professional, that this was not racially motivated. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Borelli, Ms. Cooley.
So this has been interesting, and we have more work ahead of us, actually, for all of us to understand what the best actions are to take and how we can resolve some other issues that were identified through this process. I found the process of the internal investigation interesting, right? Coming from a corporate background, a higher education background, right? The things that I think of with internal investigations do suggest at least some oversight or some outside eyes as part of the process. And I think what we've learned is all of this is that historically, this has been a process that's occurred within the department itself. We know that we're looking at something in the future that, under the police reform bill that was just passed by the state, that defines a post-commission that will be providing or is anticipated to provide some outside eyes in this function in the future. But I do think there's a question, you know, in a corporation or in higher ed where I currently work, you have a compliance officer, you know, there's somebody else who just looks at the question from a slightly different perspective, and also in terms of thinking about the report and doesn't answer all the questions that somebody might want to have answered. It will need to talk, I think, in more detail about how the town provides that function in the bridge between now and the post-commission when that comes into effect. And I think that's forecast to come into effect after July 1st, if I'm understanding correctly what that timeline is. The other piece that I'm very interested in, in understanding more about, that I've talked with this board about since we originally learned, is about the potential role of apology in an incident like this. And that is something that I also hope that we will have more conversation about. As I think people realize, it was something that we had reached out to Mr. Henry's lawyers about in August. I had reported that the board had done so in October to town meeting. But I'm glad that we have finally today apologized for the concern for Mr. Henry, given that we had recognized that he was no longer a suspect. I very much appreciate the work that the police have done, and I look forward because I know that it is always their intent to serve our citizens well and that we all want to do our best at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anybody else? Dan Matthews? Still on mute, Dan?
I'm glad to have the report, and I am, I regret that it took so long to get to this, but I think the, we're working in the COVID environment, and it was a thorough effort by Attorney Tidwell and her group. It's a helpful report. I support the work of the Needham Police Department. It is difficult work in a difficult time. And hindsight is always 2020, but this incident should not have happened. And Mr. Henry did nothing wrong. I join in the apology of the board to Mr. Henry. I hope he's, I hope he's doing all right. I think I echo something that I heard Mary Ann say. It would have been better if we could have made that kind of a statement at an earlier stage, but we need to find the path forward. The report is very helpful in a number of ways. It shows something about the difficulty of the work. It shows the effort that the men and women in the department made in responding to the report of a crime. It also shows areas of improvement that really, and things that we should look at and, in some cases, adopt, in some cases, review and consider what our best options are. It's a good report to have. This is a difficult conversation for everyone involved. As I said, this shouldn't have happened to Mr. Henry, and I am sorry, and I know that the members of, and that's why it says this in the, in the motion that we voted. Hopefully, this event leads to opportunities for us to improve as a town. I know that that is what we've all been trying to do this past year, and hopefully, this report helps continue us in that direction. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dan. John Bullion?
Thank you. And I do want to echo the sentiments of the board and extend an apology to Mr. Henry. This has been a grueling, long process. I'm very pleased with the, that the Tidwell report was done and the manner of which it was done. Attorney Tidwell is recognized in the field. It doesn't make it easy, and clearly, you know, Mr. Henry will have scars from this. But I do want to say, and for those people watching this, that, and I know that all of us understand and appreciate the people that work for us. And as I've said to many people, the police have the most difficult job in our society. And, and that doesn't mean that there can't be improvement. The Tidwell report has outlined some areas where there are improvements that can be looked at and that will be looked at. However, I do support our police, as I do all of our employees in this town. And, you know, and I know that they are doing the best job that they have been trained for, and that is the key. They have been trained and well-trained to do the job of working with and protecting the public. So it's a very complex situation. And, you know, I think that this is, well, I will look at this, and I know many others will look at this as a learning opportunity, which we need to do. And for that, I, you know, I think we move forward, and thank you. Thank you for the report.
And thank you, John. I'll just close with a couple of comments. First, I agree with the sentiments expressed by my fellow board members. I think we I think we need to keep in mind that these, this timeline occurred during a time of great upheaval, both political, racial, economic, and pandemic-related that causes a great deal of tension so that everything that happens is much worse than it otherwise would be. That's one. And two, the time it took for this to come to our attention says to me that we have to find a way for people who feel aggrieved to be able to be comfortable enough to come forward and let us know long sooner than it happened in this case. And that, we're not unique that way. This is a problem for all of us in this state. People need to feel that they can comfortably come forward and lodge an issue with their town government. So we need to be looking at that in the years ahead and trying to solve that particular issue. I very much thank the chief of police for his cooperation in this investigation. And with that, I would like to see if there's any further comment from any of the board members. Mr. Borelli.
Just for Attorney Harrington, I don't, I just want to get back to the probable cause question because that was unresolved by Attorney Tidwell. And when I'm looking at the report, and I'm just a layman here, but, you know, you could argue that there was probable cause, and we heard from the chief, depending on, because of the fact pattern, right? There wasn't ongoing shoplifting going on, let's not forget, and this was misidentification. And again, sorry for Mr. Henry's put, it's a perfect storm, and he was pointed out to be the wrong suspect. But given those set of circumstances and the probable cause question kind of still lingering over there because there was no determination, what is our next move as a town to try to flush that out? Or do you think that's an area that this has been concluded?
I think for the town's purposes, it's an area that's been concluded for now. I think it raises good instruction for internal affairs investigations in the future, particularly applying a specific standard like a preponderance of the evidence so that when our internal affairs investigations are conducting the investigation, they know what they're shooting for, they know what kind of the level they're trying to prove to, as do the officers, as do the public. So I think the specific incident, I think we've looked at it and can move on now, but as far as that question going forward, I think remains an important one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Schlittler, do you have anything else you would care to say at this point?
Well, first, thank you for having me here, and I know the work that's been done by everybody, I'm grateful for. You know, without getting into too much specifics, I think, you know, when you look at that, we know that there's work to be done. We know that there's a gap that we have to close in terms of gaining the trust of certain aspects of our community. And we're going to do what we can, everything we can to make sure that we close that gap. And, you know, we want the people to feel that we're serving everybody in the community because that's really important to us, and we'll do what's necessary to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Is there any other business before us this evening? Then, before we adjourn, I would like to reiterate that Mr. Henry has done nothing wrong, and we are deeply sorry for these events. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Moved.
Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Ms. Cooley.
Yes.
Mr. Bullion.
Yes.
Mr. Borelli.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. This meeting is adjourned. Materials will be online.